Good afternoon, good evening, depending on when you're watching this feed. If this is your first time here, welcome. My name is Frankie Olivo. Our program focuses on the very important issues that are affecting our local community. We have shed light on injustices and we've allowed for our platform, this mic to be that of the voice of the people. Now, this is something you can see yourself supporting. We ask that you join the cause. Currently, right now, this live program is being streamed across all of our social media platforms. We could be found on X, formerly known as Twitter, and on Facebook, under Frankie Olivo. Make sure you follow our personal page on Face. It could be found under Olivo Frankie. But more importantly, if you haven't already, create a Gmail account. Go to YouTube. Like, follow, and subscribe to our YouTube channel titled Frankie Olivo TV. It's free. Remember, Brownsville, I will never, ever ask you for money. I will never, ever ask you for food. Well, now with the holidays, I just might. I'm kidding, kidding. All I ask of my community is something very simple. You want to continue for me to provide you with the latest coverage that is happening within our city, county, and our region? All I ask for, all I ask in return is something very, very simple. I'm not hard to please, Brownsville. Subscribe to our social media platforms. More importantly, if you haven't already, make sure that you subscribe to our YouTube channel titled Frankie Olivo TV. Currently, right now, we are at about 885 subscribers. Our goal by the end of this year is to reach the 1,000 mark. We have three stories that we promise to, to release. Very juicy ones. One of them being administrators having sex on campus, on school time. Another one is a political being overstepping his boundaries. I'll leave it like that. And the last one is a very interesting one that has been brewing as of late at one of our local high schools. Cheating, a grading scandal. But no, this isn't a cheating scandal, a grading scandal amongst students. No, it's far beyond that. This cheating scandal involves counselors. Counselors manipulating grades to benefit a student whose mother is also a counselor at that very school. Again, three very juicy stories, Brownsville. I promise that I will release them, but I ask for something in return. You see, what I do here is a very, very, um, it's very delicate. It's dangerous in nature, so to speak. So again, you want me to break those three stories? Uh, I will gladly do so. Again, we have made great strides since we started coming on the tube at 9:00 AM in early April. We started out with 230 subscribers. Now we are at 8:50. But the goal is 1,000. So if you could, please help me, help me get there. Ladies and gentlemen, today, ladies and gentlemen, we celebrate Veterans Day. We extend our deepest gratitude to the brave men and women who have served our country with honor, courage, and dedication. It is because of you, your sacrifices, both seen and unseen. You have protected the freedoms we cherish and strengthen the foundations of our nation. We thank you for your unwavering commitment, your resilience, and your selfish service to our country today and every day. We honor you and your families for all that you have given in the name of, in the name of freedom. Good morning, Roman. How's your Tuesday going?
Good morning. Happy Veterans Day. Um, yeah, it's been good, good. You know, enjoying the cool weather. I'm a little bit colder than I, I thought I was going to be and you know, I'm a little shaky because it's cold, but it'll be okay. You know, or I think in a little while, um, I think the silent march takes place on Central Boulevard. I think it starts at 10 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. From HEB over to Veterans Park there by the library. I, I think it starts at 10 o'clock. So hopefully people can go out there and, and participate if they'd like to and thank a veteran for their service to our country.
Uh, again, it is, uh, we do have breezy weather right now. In Brownsville, we are at 63. Tonight, it's gonna, it's gonna, last night, I think it was in the 50s. Uh, I had to, I had to put on the heater. Typical Mexican. You know, we, I wrapped myself in, in, in three San Marcos, two sweaters, three, three underwears and two socks. But it got to, it got to a point where I was like, okay, I need to, I, I need to turn on the heater. So I'm, I'm sure my, my, my grandfather was waiting for that, for that moment. Uh, again, happy, happy Veterans Day. For the most part, if I'm not mistaken, all banks are closed. The school district is, is closed as well, from my understanding. Uh, if you do have time, uh, go and participate, go to the, go to Central Boulevard. And also shots out to all those veterans. Uh, make sure you go to Chick-fil-A, to Roadhouse, and any other establishment that will provide meals, teaching every one of you. You and your family deserve it. It's the least that, that we as a community could do, uh, could do giving back. Today's program, I wanted to focus on, uh, again, we are a week away, uh, from the voters, Roman, of overwhelmingly denying a school board proposition bond that would essentially increase their taxes. And this resonated with a lot of people. We were kind of iffy of having low voter turnout, you know, we didn't, we couldn't gauge the numbers because we said, oh man, this, this doesn't look good. But the, the voters came out and, 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 um, you know, voted against the bond. Well, something transpired as of late, uh, that has been brewing for a while now. Today, we titled our program censoring school board member Carlos Elizondo. Censoring a school board member who uses explicit language towards their colleagues is essential to uphold the integrity, professionalism, and trust expected of public officials. School board members, they serve as our representatives of the community to serve as role models for students. And their behavior directly reflects the values of educational institution that they govern, which is BISD. Now, the use of explicit or abusive language, it does undermine respect, communication, respectful communication. It disrupts collaboration and it can create a hostile or uncomfortable working environment. By issuing a former censor, the board reaffirms its commitment to civility, accountability, and ethical conduct. Because we want to make it clear that such behavior is not, is unacceptable in a, uh, in a position that is dedicated to the education and wellbeing of, of the children. Uh, Roman, what are your thoughts in this? Is this out of line for, uh, community members to be raising this question to the board?
No, I, I don't think it's out of line. I think a board member needs to be able to put it on the agenda immediately at the next meeting and censure Carlos for what he did and what he said. Um, because you can't allow him to get away with some of the things that he said. You know, his aggressive behavior is one thing. You're allowed to be aggressive, I guess. Uh, you know, to, to get the answers that you want to ask and, you know, how he berates staff and asks the questions that he does at board meetings. Uh, but it's a completely different thing to use the F word and refer to their, the mental capacity of the board members that are there, considering that he's busy at work. Um, he busy dressed in his work attire. He's not even present in the building and it looks like he's talking to somebody else. They're at work and referencing the people that he's supposed to be serving with his colleagues on the board. And I know that there are some individuals out there that have heard the audio and say, no, no, he's not, he's not saying that. I heard it multiple times. That's not what he's saying. I, I'm pretty sure if we were to do, do an AI machine to see what the cap, closed captioning said on those words, they'd be able to pick, it would be able to pick it up. Um, and, and know that he said those things. And yeah, he should be censured. I don't know why they wouldn't censure him. I guess the only way they wouldn't censure him is if his little puppets, you know, Minerva and, um, and Carlos, you know, I mean, uh, Frank, Frank Blackystock, Blacky Lock, sorry. Um, if he decided not to censure him and it's a four, three vote, um, maybe, maybe, you know, Goldie, go, uh, like Golden Girl will vote to censure, you know? But then again, she is really focusing on the, on the fun balance. You know, that's her thing. She's focused on the fun balance and maybe she thinks that we, we don't have to be focusing on censoring board members just because she used the F word and referred to her mental capacity. I, I think, you know, maybe she won't vote that way just because, oh, we need to focus on the fun balance and not focus on anything else. That's the most important thing. You know, but they should censor him.
Again, many people misconstrue what we do. They think that I personally have a personal agenda against Carlos Elizondo. By no means, uh, I understand that Carlos has his cheerleaders out there that no matter what he does, people are going to support him. That's fair, uh, that's fair to say. Now, what we tried to do is we tried to call a spade a spade. It's possibly gotten me in trouble with fellow colleagues or people that claim to be for the people. Our program likes to keep our elected leaders and those in leadership positions accountable. What we have seen from this board member has been a reckless behavior throughout the years. Now, censoring a board member is not out of the norm. Uh, he, during this current tenure of his, uh, serving the community of Brownsville, he has been censored before. Previously, Jessica Gonzalez, who was the board president at the time, uh, did put it on the agenda for him to be censored because, uh, he was disobeying the Robert's Rules of, of Order, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, he was multiple times, he was told, you know, let's move on, let's move on, let's move on. And he kept on interjecting, interjecting. Now, what I have heard from the Golden Girl as of late has been respecting the process respecting Robert's Rules of Order in previous board meetings. That is something that I, that has, that I, that I have caught on to what the Golden Girl has, has focused on. Now, again, I wanted to make it very clear. It doesn't matter who on that board, uh, is being disrespectful, is being out of line. Best believe that this program will let you know. That is our, that is my responsibility to keep you informed. Again, we are criticized, we are ridiculed. I'll take it with a smile on my face. You brought up a, an interesting point, Roman. Not only was, uh, not only was Carlos Elizondo reprimanded, censored previously, I want to say maybe two years ago, but he also got into a shouting match with the school board secretary where, you know, words were exchanged. And according to people present at the meeting, he shouted "F you" to, uh, to the, the school board secretary. Now, look, we understand this position is a very, uh, difficult one. I'm not saying that it's roses, that it's a walk in the park. No, these board members have a big and great responsibility. And for the most part, that we know, they don't get paid. Now, do they receive benefits under the table? Uh, that's for a different story, which we'll be covering tomorrow. Tomorrow's program is the Board of Conflicts of Interest. But Carlos Elizondo has shown a pattern of being disrespectful, of being reckless, of, of, of not being able to control himself. And today's program, I want to remind you of the things that he has done previously. So it's not out of line because I know there's going to be people that are going to criticize us and, 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 or me and say, oh, you just have something personal against Carlos. And look, we'll, we'll play the, we'll play the, the video right now and you yourself could decide what was said. I don't want to lie to people. I don't try to misconstrue the, the facts. We'll show the video and let you decide what was said. But why is he, Roman? Why is he appearing via Zoom? Is, is, is there something where, you know, we need to make it to where the, look, we understand people travel. People have emergencies, Roman. You know, life happens. But this isn't the first time that we've had this school board member, uh, appear, uh, virtually. Now, does, is it a big deal? To some, it may not, but when you look at the, the, the full picture and the scope of things, is he serving two masters? People are saying, well, he needs to work. Well, maybe he should, he should focus all his attention on providing healthcare, providing, uh, the services that, uh, that he was entrusted to do. Is it, are we out of line, Roman, of, of questioning the reasons why this board member constantly appears, uh, virtually?
Yeah, no, I, I've been saying this for a while. Uh, I mean, he, he has no business, you know, doing these Zoom meetings while he's working and getting paid. I mean, he's getting paid at, by his employer, uh, to do work, uh, to do the things that he's supposed to do wherever the heck he's at, whether he's at the hospital or clinic. I don't, I don't even know where he works. Uh, but maybe, you know, you know, thankfully, none of the things that he's doing is, is essentially, is a conflict of interest with, uh, with BISD. It's not like he's got there working for a vendor or anything like that while he's voting on, on issues via Zoom. Thankfully, that's not happening as far as I know. And, um, but at the same time, he is supposed to give as much attention as possible to, to what is going on in the board meeting. I don't know how he, I mean, even me, me and you right now, we're, we're doing a podcast. Uh, I mean, I have the TV on. Sometimes that's a little distracting. I'm not, you know, watching it. Something might come out, breaking news or whatever. I want to look at it and I might lose a little bit of attention listening to what you're, you're saying or, or whatever somebody's commenting on, 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 on the podcast. Like right now, Daniel's, you know, commenting what he's commenting. You know, I'm distracted. Can you imagine Carlos Elizondo? I mean, I'm not saying that he's smarter or better than me, but maybe he's more capable than I am. That he's able to provide healthcare services wherever he's providing healthcare services simultaneously, listening and voting on issues like, uh, like, um, an audit that has, you know, $350,000. You know, we're, you're, we're spending buttloads of money at BISD and you're voting on these issues and having to listen to the presentations. How is he able to do those things at the same time? I mean, he, he might be better than I am. Might be better than you, Frankie. Maybe he's Superman. I mean, he has a bald head over there. Maybe he's like Lex Luthor and super brain kind of, kind of guy. Or, or maybe he's Egghead, you know, from Batman, totally smart because of his bald head. I don't know. Uh, but it's just ridiculous that he's doing these Zoom meetings and it's, it's, it's time for the Brownsville ISD Border Trustees to put a policy. It's way, way past overdue, way long overdue. He, they need to do something like that. Now, I, I recall when they were voting on La Golden, ultimately when they voted on La Golden Girl, Carlos Elizondo was there in person when it was an open session. Open session that occurred. And then at some point, when they went into executive session to do the interviews of the prospective candidates, for the people that, that had been nominated by his fellow board members, he left. And he was, conducted interviews while he was working in full regalia of his, you know, you know, nursing gear. And he was conducting these interviews via Zoom. He never showed, he didn't really show his face. He, he told, um, uh, the, the, his fellow board members and the attorney at the time, which was Eric Flores, you know, the current Republican, uh, one of the, one of the 10 people running for Congress under Republican banner. And Eric had to say to every interview person, had to say, and the only reason I know this is because Eric said this to me while, before I was interviewing him, he said, I'm saying this to every candidate, that, that although, uh, Mr. Elizondo is not going to be asking questions, uh, please rest, and he is via Zoom and his camera will not be turned on, uh, please rest assured that he is paying attention. Like, really? I mean, this is, he is doing these things while he's deciding on who to vote for or who to, to accept to replace your uncle on the board. To no longer have it be 3-3 board. He's, he's voting on somebody and he doesn't even have the courtesy to stay there and listen to them in person. So, and then he ultimately supports La Golden Girl. How happy is that, is he with that? I'm wondering. Maybe, maybe he would have been there in person and really looked her in the eye and figured out this woman is not exactly who you think she is. How happy is he right now with the things that she's done to him? You know, as a board member, voting against his measures, voting on his stuff. You know? I just think it's, it's funny that he did that, but maybe if he showed up in person and voted the right way. Now, as far as the meeting last week on Tuesday, he's well aware of when these meetings are going to take place because they're always the first Tuesday of every month. And, or in the case of this, it was Wednesday because they had an election the previous day. He can't get those, those days off? He doesn't like, hey boss, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to show up today. I need, I need this day off. Let me move around my schedule. Why doesn't he do that? I mean, is it really that difficult for him to do? Um, maybe he should be doing that. I, I'm just, look, I, Daniel, I'm just, I'm just, I, I agree, you know, the idea of no piojos is, is hilarious. You know, I think that's funny. I, I didn't even think about that, but yeah, you're right. He, he doesn't have to worry about piojos. And I'm just, I'm being funny. I mean, just, he's very super, he's Lex Luthor. That's, I guess, you know, we have a name for everybody, right? I mean, come on, why, why is he doing it via Zoom? And, and maybe, maybe, just maybe, had he not been on Zoom, he would not have said what he said at the last meeting, insulting his fellow board members. And now we're having to discuss whether he should be censured and he really should be censured. Like, there should be no questions about it. It should be, you know, they should be falling over themselves as fellow board members trying to file that censure and putting it on the next agenda.
And, and again, you know, these, these meetings, it's not like if it's like a powwow. It's not like if it's like a 10, 15, 20, 30 minute meetings. You have these meetings starting at 5:30. Sometimes they drag on into the wee hours of, uh, past, past midnight. So it's not something that, oh, you know, let me take a quick break. Let me take a 50, let me take my lunch hour. Let me take my lunch hour and let me, let me focus on, uh, my responsibilities and duties as a board member to get things done and then, and then I'll be back. Uh, I'm not sure if he, if he still works at DHR. I could be wrong. He was, uh, he was in that, um, in that capacity at one time. I could be wrong.
Frankie, yeah, Frankie, sorry to interrupt, but Daniel's saying, you know, there's nothing wrong with Zoom. Explain yourself. Like, why is there nothing wrong with him being on, on Zoom? I mean, the, the, you, he, he not showing his camera. You don't know what he's doing. You know, for all you know, he's getting text messages behind, I mean, I'm not saying that this is what's going on. I'm not saying that. But, I mean, he doesn't have his camera on. He could be getting messages from people, vendors, for example, say, hey, vote this way. Oh, you know, ask this question, do this. He being told what to do, and I'm not saying he is being told what to do. He could be told what to do. Because we can't see him. The idea is we, the V people, these, this is supposed to be a public meeting. It's not an executive meeting where you can be behind closed doors. You're supposed to be out in the open, open, making these decisions so that people can hold you accountable because you were voted in that position or in the case of the Golden Girl, she wasn't voted and she was appointed. You should be there present in person. We do not, we no longer have COVID. COVID is not an excuse anymore. It's not like he was over in Seattle or whatever, you know, doing these things. We, he should be present. We should be able to see what he's doing at all times. At all times during that meeting. If for whatever reason, you know, there's a vote taking place and he's over there busy, you know, texting, we should be able to see that or him or any other board member. We should be able to know, hey, when that vote was going on, he was texting. He wasn't even paying attention. We don't even know what he's doing because he's like, he's, he's like Wizard of Oz or, you know, some man behind the curtain. You don't even see him. The, you know, they even had to force him at the last meeting to turn on his freaking camera. And he's like, I don't want to turn on my camera. I don't have to do that. And then it's like, no, you do, according to, you had to do that. And then, no, no, I only had to do it when I'm voting or, or whatever. And he's like, no, no, you, you have to turn on him when you're speaking. That is what the, uh, the attorney, Kevin O'Handlin, you know, looking good there, Mr. O'Handlin, uh, you know, said, no, no, you have to turn on when you're speaking and that there he is. Now you can finally see him. So yeah, I, I think it's just ridiculous to be having these Zoom meetings, uh, for, you know, meetings involving the Texas Open Meetings Act. And that's what this meeting is doing. Again, I'm not saying that anything nefarious is happening. I'm not saying he's doing anything criminal or anything like that. I'm just saying as an example, why I, as a voter, I as a citizen, would like to have these board members, all of them, whether they're at the BISD, whether they're Port of Brownsville, TSC, uh, City of Brownsville, uh, the county or, or any other public entity that falls under the Texas Open Meetings Act, they should not be doing Zoom meetings. These, these vote, people who are voting on behalf of voters, behalf of taxpayers, they should be seen at all times.
And again, he is a nurse practitioner. Uh, he works in the healthcare industry. Is he actively taking care of patients? Just imagine if, if, if somebody's taking care of you and they're on a phone call, they're on Zoom, on the phone or on their laptop. And you need, uh, a dosage of medicine. You, you need, uh, a wound to be addressed. You need, again, do nurses take breaks? Do they take, yes, they do, obviously. But it just, it just, you know, it kind of has me thinking. I would freak out if I saw my nurse doing that. I would freak out. Be like, can I get somebody else? Because he's more worried about, you know, about his personal issues, his personal things instead of, instead of me. Now, does DHR allow that? Again, do people take our breaks to, to our lunches? Possibly, yes. But these board meetings are lengthy. It's not something that they get done in 10, 15 minutes. We'll be lucky. We hope that they do, but they don't. They, they, they last a, a long, long time. So there are many questions as to the reasons why that he's on Zoom. Many people say, well, he's gotta eat. Well, again, he knows very well exactly when these board meetings are taking place. It's, it's not something that they drop one day to the next. So let's, let's play the video, ladies and gentlemen. You be, you be the one to decide exactly what was said, uh, on that day regarding this effing stupid remark made.
No. For the meeting on Monday? No. For the meeting on Monday?
Yeah, it's a lot. Yeah, but it's stupid.
There it is.
Under B1?
Oh, sorry.
No action?
I'll play, I'll play it again.
Yes, I know, I'm muting right now.
I'm muted right now.
We are grouping to no. For the meeting on Monday?
Yeah.
There you go. It's one.
Under B1?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No action?
I'm stupid.
They're stupid.
Yes, I know, I'm muting right now.
We are grouping.
So if you caught that, he says it, he says it twice. He says they're effing stupid. Somebody asked him, are you in a meeting? So we have possibly what Roman, a colleague, a friend, uh, uh, eavesdrop. They probably walk into the room and they say, oh, is that live? Are you in a meeting? And he says, yes, we are. They're fuck, they're effing stupid. And then he says, oh, sorry. So he, he catches himself. He catches himself calling this, uh, his colleagues, this derogatory term uh, towards them. He doesn't say it once, he says it twice. And then he says, oh, I'm going to mute myself. So he probably realizes, oh crap, I made a mistake. Again, how did y'all hear it chat? Am I hearing something that, that's not there? Am I making things up, Roman? What, what did you catch from that?
No, I don't, I, I don't think you're making things up. That's, that's pretty much what happened. You know, he, he knows what he's doing. He calls them effing stupid. Um, you know, the people that he's in the meeting with. And so, I mean, he could be referring to, uh, the presentors, the, the administration, the superintendent, the entirety of the board. That's not that present, including that golden girl, even Minerva, all of them, you know, they're effing stupid. Um, and it means somebody, you know, caught him, I guess, saying, you know, oh, you're in that meeting. I, I, I try to think about it this way. What is the, the, the student handbook say? What does the student handbook say at B I S D in regards to how, if a student were to refer to somebody in this manner? Would they be punished? Would they be sent to ISS? Would they be so, oh, it's okay. It's not a big deal. What would happen to a student if they referred to, let's say, a teacher? Or the school district or maybe another student, a group of students? And a teacher heard it or whatever. What, what would happen to that student? How would they get in trouble for the same words? The same actions that Carlos Elizondo did at the board meeting? I think they would be in trouble. May, or, or have we be, have, uh, or as us as a society uh, become so deranged, not deranged, maybe that's the wrong word, uh, so far gone, so far gone? That we don't take the, the phrase effing stupid seriously anymore. I, I would, I would venture to say a student would get in trouble. Or, or let's say, uh, a teacher, uh, a, a teacher is, is, uh, at the school and she, she, he or she is meeting with, um, uh, administrators and having, they're having a meeting. And, um, and he steps away, she or she steps away because he gets a phone call for whatever reason. And you could hear him, I am at a meeting, I'm fucking stupid. See my friend, sorry, you, I, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, uh. What if that would happen with the teacher? Oh, 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 I'm sorry. There's, uh, let me mute myself. Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't close the door. What would happen to that teacher? Would they be reprimanded? Would they be like, hey? Would they be given, not the pink slip necessary, you know, terminated, but they'd be written up for that, right? For that's kind of insubordination. So think about it that way. Why wouldn't we hold Carlos Elizondo accountable for that? Because if you don't, if a board member votes this, votes not to censure him, let's say, Goldie, Black Elocks decides not to vote that way. Or Minerva Peña, who's all about law and order, right? She's all about the law, all about the order. That's what she believes in. If she's not holding him accountable for what he said, then she condones the foul language, that foul language to be used by students all over B I S D. She would condone that kind of language being used by any teacher all over B I S D. And, and what, or, or I'll give you a different example. What if a teacher referred to students? Oh, they're effing stupid, these students, uh, you know, just outside the classroom on a phone call. How would the students feel if, if a teacher were to say these language? So, and I, and I'm pointing, cause I have no doubt in my mind Denise, Jessica and Daniela will vote to, would vote to censure him. I don't have doubt. So it's really Minerva Frank and La Golden Girl. So I think that these are the arguments that need to be made to these people because if they don't vote to censure, then they are condoning that language, condoning teachers saying these things on campus, students saying these things, and they're not holding themselves accountable to those words that he used in public. And no amount of scrubbing, because I heard, I was told that if you go look at the video right now, it's going to be bleeped out. Because, and that should never be taking place. You know, these are public meetings. All of it should be publicly, a public record to be able, um, to, to see it, to listen to it, to watch it without any editing whatsoever, including censor, uh, sense, censure, not censoring, not censure ring, but censoring the language that we use by Carlos Elizondo at the last board meeting.
Uh, going back, uh, going back to his F U shouting match with the school board secretary. It is my understanding that she was reprimanded, written up, suspended for a day or so. So, so, so she felt the consequences of, of what, of what transpired. Was anything done to Carlos Elizondo? Again, he is in authoritative position. He should know better. Again, who in their right mind in an open forum has this type of dialogue with, with a woman? You know, maybe if you have some sort of disagreement, you say, hey, you know what? Uh, either I don't like what you, what you said. I'm not in agreement. Maybe you want to, to refrain from addressing me in that manner. It's all about respect, but this is his character, Roman. This is his M O. He has been known to, to be this way. And look, ladies and gentlemen, we're not talking about the student council for the local high school. We're not talking about the local, um, what the local P T A meetings, you know, that, that, that our mom and grandparents go to. This is the school board, the B I S D school board that has a budget of $600 million. This is a huge entity. We should be treating people with respect. Again, treat, treat others the way you want to be treated. So we have had a secretary that was suspended, from my understanding, a day, two. When a suspension comes, I think that they lose money. I don't know. That, that's what comes to mind. Was anything done to school board member Carlos Elizondo? Did anybody bring it up to his attention? And look, he is at a point right now where he says, you see, all y'all were against the bond. I wasn't. So he's on a little high. So right now he thinks that he could do whatever. He thinks that the community is going to continue to support him. But are we really? Again, that's, that's, that's one thing that has happened. Let's talk about the accusation. He was being accused. He was being accused by a fellow board member of, um, of doing how Roman says, something nefarious, you know? Um, as of, right now, there is this issue of, the, the school board is dealing with this issue of the insurance. The insurance has been a topic of discussion as of late. And whenever we go back to that, uh, to that meeting, he was accused in open forum of providing sensitive information to, uh, to vendors. Now, I know what you all are thinking. Oh, you just repeat, you just, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to paint a picture for you of the character that is Carlos Elizondo and why there is a need to censor him, to check him, to put him in his place. Because think of your children. Whenever they do something out of line and you don't correct them and you don't bring it up to the attention, what do they do? They see what they could get away with. You give them an inch, how the saying goes, and they take a mile. Oh, so you didn't do anything to me when I said F U to the school board secretary? Ha, 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 ha. Look what I'm gonna do. Not only now am I gonna call the school board secretary, uh, uh, F U and have a shouting match in an open forum disrespecting, having no sense of professionalism, showing the parents. Again, you think parents want to see that? You think parents are saying, oh, let me send my school because look at this school board member. He respects his fellow colleague, uh, uh, of, of fellow subordinate of his? Ultimately, I think that Carlos could possibly, I don't know, possibly get someone like the school board secretary fired. That's just my opinion. I don't know, maybe a board member has that.
Hello? Are you frozen again Frankie?
Yes, ah, uh, again, technology. Uh, let, let me know, uh, let me know when, when, when I cut off Roman or just, or just jump in. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play the video Roman, let me know once, if, if I go off. In this board meeting, uh, in this board meeting, ladies and gentlemen, uh, Carlos Elizondo is being accused of providing sensitive information to a request for proposal process where everything is, 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 is top secret. Everything is confidential. Only those vendors that are applying, uh, for this position, for this grants, for these, um, contracts. They are the ones that are able to ask questions. They are able to, uh, get more information in regards to that. But listen to what Denise Garza says, and she's addressing herself towards Carlos Elizondo.
For you, the best plan for yourself and for your family. Because it's not fair for the taxpayers to put in two and a half million dollars on the taxpayers because we didn't plan ahead.
I have Ms. Grantlin next.
This is the reason why.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to remind my colleagues that there are Robert's Rules of Order to be followed. And the way this transpired unfortunately was that we got into the presentation, but there was, there was a quick uh, motion made, but it was, everything happened so quickly that you did not recognize him. I agree to that. But we all need to remember there's some decorum we need to follow. And yes, we are all passionate about this. And I too agree that we need to find the very best for our employees, but I would like to ask all of our colleagues to please maintain the decorum.
Ms. Garza?
Yes, and Dr. Cantu. Yes, there is a process. We're currently in the middle of a contract. So that was never offered to our employees because we did not go out looking for qualifications because we aren't currently in the middle of a contract. So due to the contract that we did approve back in 2023 for it to begin January of 2024, we're going based on what we went out for back in that time. So that is why our employees were never offered that because we are currently in the middle of that contract. Now, we do know that there is insurance companies out there who has been out looking out for every board member and trying to offer deals and everything. And so I just want to know, the community to know that yes, there's some people who are pushing certain insurance companies to our employees, which I'm going to tell you, I am a member to one of those outside companies and I don't think, even as a member, that I think it is best for our district. And so thank you to our insurance committee because you guys have done this process since 2023. We know what transpired also in 2023. There was board members who also had information, part of that CSP that was not privileged information to us.
Listen.
Which also I think would have violated that process. And so again, thank you guys because you all use this insurance. And you guys look out for you all and you all look out for the rest of the employees of our district. And I want to tell you that this is a very good offer because I currently have insurance with the city and we don't have a $750 deductible. Um, I don't, I did not get a $2.25 increase. I've got more than that. I'm paying at the end of the year over a thousand dollars more because I need that insurance. So thank you all again for taking the time. You guys do this so passionately. I know you all have been doing it for some years. So thank you. And I just want to say that as a former B I S D employee, I wish I had this insurance coverage.
That. So again, a fellow colleague on that school board is making serious accusations, Roman. To me, this is corruption. To me, this is rigging the process. She is accusing Carlos Elizondo of providing insurance vendors with information that only they are privy to. It is said, Roman, and it wouldn't be far fetched that the three letter agencies are on top of this very issue. Because again, Sylvia Atkinson, who was, uh, convicted of corruption charges, she was known to be dealing and, and, and wheeling and dealing in these types of things. Again, she was only caught taking $10,000 of bribes, but there is said to, to be in the thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars accorded to someone like Erasmo Castro, who closely followed that, uh, that case. But nonetheless, this is a pattern of an individual that is taking things, matters into his own hands. He is openly disrespecting a, a board secretary, his colleagues on that board, and now he is rigging the process and corrupting and tainting the system, uh, the of providing information to the insurance vendor. This is a character issue that we have with this school board member. So again, this is a culmination of things, Roman. And in my eyes, this is not a good look for the school district.
I would agree. Um, it's, it's interesting. You posted that video and it brought back, you know, that day that I was there listening to it. Um, whether it's what Denise said, um, said about, I mean, she didn't name him. Um, but it sounded like that's who she was referring to. Again, she didn't say any names. But again, it looks like that's who she was referring to. Um, and you're allowed to use your own imagination. Um, as to whether or not she was referring to him or maybe another board member at the time. Uh, but it, see, and the reason I think that, that she was probably referring to him is because of how he was pushing the insurance and, and stuff. And, and she mentions the word deals, like, you know, talking to people, you know, the insurance company making these deals. Well, the fact that Carlos at this moment in time, I mean, that, that's what, that, that moment, uh, was talking about numbers, zero, zero, zero percent, you know, a zero, zero dollars, zero, this, zero, that, you know, talking. Yeah, yeah. Talking about the numbers, that sounded like he understood he was negotiating or getting, you know, numbers and deals. And that's why I think that's why she might've been referring to him. But again, we don't know. The only one who knows who she was referring to is Denise Garza. And maybe one day she'll let us all know if she was explicitly talking about Carlos and making those insinuations. Again, we're just, we just believe it just because of what, how she said it, the moment, who she might've been directing her comments to. And then it also reminded me about what, you know, La Golden Girl was saying. It's like, oh, oh, you, you, I, I recognize that, that you, that, that you made a motion. You, you may not have heard, uh, that, that he was trying to get, I rec, I accept that. I accept what you're saying. And it's like, there's no reason to accept anything. That's what happened. You know, you don't have to say that. Um, and it's like, well, you know, you know, it happened so, so quickly, so fast. Like, oh, okay. Were you asleep or something? And you were like sleepy Joe? Sleepy Joe Biden? That you didn't catch what, what happened? And, you know, she is the chairwoman of the meeting. She doesn't have to recognize anybody. She can, she can talk as long as she wants to because she's the chair. So she didn't, you know, even, even if, if Carlos Elizondo got on top of the chair and on top of the desk and jumped up and down and made his motion or whatever to get it, to get her attention. She doesn't have to recognize him. I mean, she does not. She can keep talking because she's the chair, whether we like it or not.
So again, I've had people messaging me and saying, why are you attacking Carlos? Why are you going after him? He's fighting for us. He's fighting for himself. Again, he is up for reelection. Do you honestly think that he deserves four more years? This is, this is his second tenure as a school board member. What have we seen from his first, what was it, Roman? 2012? When he was first elected or was it 2016? It was around, it was, you know, around that time. Let's say the past 10 years. Uh, that's, that's somewhere accurate ballpark. In the past 10 years, ladies and gentlemen, has our school district improved or regressed with someone such as Minerva Peña, who has been there for, going on two decades? And Carlos Elizondo, who has been there for 10 years? We showed you, I showed you the map of how B I S D for the past 10 years, since 2015, we've been losing students at a rapid pace. Why, why isn't this blame of, oh, we need HVACs, we need facilities, we need improvements, we need to fix our schools? Why isn't this addressed to them in particular? And I say them because they're the longest tenures. Well, now, not Carlos per se, but throughout time. These other board members are fairly new, so to speak, and we can't blame the collapse of the facilities of maintenance on these new board members. What, who, who I do blame is someone such as Minerva Peña and Carlos Elizondo, who have previously been on that board. Have they ever, Roman? You follow the school board closely, possibly more than I ever have. Have you ever gone back and said, wow, these Have you ever gone back and said, wow, these people are on top of the maintenance and facilities? They're thinking ahead. They want us to prevent, they want us to prevent us going out for a bond. They, they, they want to address issues that are pressing. The big issue is, oh, we need good, good, good classrooms so these students could, could learn and, and, and they'll excel in, in these beautiful HVACs. Have we ever heard that from them? No. So I ask you the question, Brownsville. Has the school district improved while Carlos Elizondo, Minerva Peña have been on this school board? Or have we regressed? Simple as that. I am a big believer that we should treat this school entity such as a business. Get the emotions out of it. What have you done for me lately? That is the way I wish people would vote, not just for the school board, but for every government body, every elected official that wants your vote. Because at the end of the day, all we see from these elected officials, and I'm going to talk about it tomorrow in depth, so make sure you tune in tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. These, these school board members, we're focusing on BISD today and tomorrow. These school board members, they themselves have benefited from this position while the school district has, has regressed. So again, I, I pose you the question, Brownsville. Have we ever seen someone such as Carlos Elizondo bring up this attention of, of, of the facilities? No, why? Because they're not worried about that. That's the last thing on their mind. They're worried about contracts. They're worried about getting their people. On the 18th, if I'm not mistaken, the school board will be entertaining the idea of this new school board attorney. It's not far fetched that Carlos Elizondo is doing everything possible to make sure that someone like Baltasar Salazar, who previously served as a school board attorney, gets the job once again. He has the three votes. The, the deciding factor is going to be the Golden Girl. So again, I ask you the question and I want this to stick, community. Has the city of Brownsville as a community, have we benefited from, from someone such as Carlos Elizondo on that school board? I want you to decide yes or no.
Yeah, I mean, there's interesting things. You know, I mean, I've been there since what, 2007, más o menos, you know, 2006, somewhere around there. And then, yeah, she was off for what, three years when she was fighting whether or not she won the election or not and then got back on the board. And then lost, uh, no, no, she was, she was on the board for three years. When she probably shouldn't have been on the board. And then lost the special election in May of last year. And then won again, so she was off the board for six months. But she'd been on the board consistently, other than those six months or so, for the last better part of it, you know, two decades. And nobody seems to hold her accountable for all the things that happened. I mean, was she the, you know, tilting at windmills the entire time and fighting for better classrooms, better this, better that? I mean, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think I've ever seen her really talk about those things, even when she was the board president, because she was board president for a little while. I, I mean, I don't, then again, I, I didn't follow BISD very closely. I've never run for BISD. It's not something that I've been, um, you know, never been a candidate for BISD, other than when I applied to be, you know, to replace your uncle on the board. But so, but I don't recall that, even in being a community activist or whatever I am, or, you know, you know, watchdog or watching what happens at, at various entities throughout the city. So it hasn't necessarily gotten better with her on the board. And it definitely hasn't gotten better with, with Carlos on the board. And I think you're right. I think he was there between 2012 and 2016 and then got, got back on the board in 2022. So, you know, it has been about, you know, 10, you know, 13 years or so since he was first on the board and then was off and then getting back on. You know, you can point back to the, the bad stuff that happened while he was on the board, I guess. You know, previously and even now. So I don't think he's been part of the solution either, you know, Minerva Peña or, or Carlos. And I think there needs to be some sort of term limits. There's no bit, no reason why somebody like Minerva Peña, who I respect, you know, I don't have a real problem with her per se, but, you know, we need the term limits. Nobody should be on the board for almost 20 years. Nobody.
And I think the city just implemented that rule. Am I, am I correct, Roman? The city, you, you could only do two terms and then you gotta sit out one or, or, or run for a different spot? Something like that?
I think it's, I think it's two, two terms, period. It's not even, even like you could sit out one and you can't, you can't go back in that position again. But that was because they put it on the agenda for, for charter review. But because this is a, um, this is a special district, it'd be handled differently. There wouldn't be a vote necessarily by the citizens for this, you know, term limits thing. It may be something that they could do in board policy, they wanted to. And then it also is something that the state legislature would have to look at. Because again, these are special districts and term limits would have to be something maybe the legislature would have to look at. Maybe that's something you can ask, you know, you know, you know, Janie, if she ever come back on the show and ask her if that's something she can put forth when it comes to these school boards especially, since she was a school board member, she'd know what we're talking about.
I, I, I think that, that's, that's, that's a great point to make. You know, we want term limits because obviously, ever since Minerva Peña, Carlos Elizondo, ever since they first set and served our communities, served the school district, we've only gone from bad to worse. And if mediocrity, if, if being mediocre is okay with you, then keep on voting for them. But I, I want somebody that's going to fight, someone that's going to put our best interest as a community in front of theirs. These people, these people haven't. Now, again, I've been trying to paint a picture for you in regards to the reasonings why I feel that the school board should really consider censoring school board member Carlos Elizondo. We have played, we have played for you audio of him openly in an open forum. Call his colleagues effing stupid, not once, but twice. He caught himself and then he muted himself. Now, this is something that is open to the public. We understand if things get, and I've heard of things get heated behind an executive session, Roman. You know, words are exchanged, you know, people have differences of opinions. They might say, you know what, screw you, man, or, or you're dumb, you're an idiot. What are you, you know, but that's behind closed doors with, with, amongst themselves and, and, and the school board attorney. That's one, F you to his colleagues. He's being accused by Denise Garza of providing sensitive information to an insurance vendor. And if you know Carlos, he's been trying to get a certain insurance vendor at one time back in 2023. I think that changed. I think now he went with somebody completely different. Maybe because Pedro Cárdenas and Gustavo De León couldn't get him a job at, at the city. Maybe that's why, I don't know. That's two. And to me, the most shocker, the, the, the most shocking thing of this all is something that has transpired since April and May and something has been lingering. When I started this program and when I took over from my predecessor, I focused on a story that pretty much put me on the map, so to speak. The reason why people called me, uh, you need to go? The reason why people called me and, uh, the reason why people called me and, um, the reason why people called me and I'd rather have Minerva and Carlos actually pose a question that the other three divas, nothing and just vote yes, YouTube user. So you're okay with an individual having no respect for, uh, for decorum? No, no respect for his, for his colleagues? Now again, we're not talking about the student council. We're not talking about PTA meeting. We're talking about a school board that represents thousands of, of, of students and staff. They are our governing body. Okay? Now, if you're okay with him having that shouting match of, of him saying F you to a, to a, uh, a school board secretary, if you're okay with that, then you expect mediocrity. Then you're okay with your child, your loved one saying those things to whoever he wants? You're okay with that? You're okay with somebody being accused of going to an insurance vendor and relaying this information? If you were accused, YouTube user, of corruption, wouldn't you address it? Wouldn't you be upfront and say, you know what? This isn't me. We're talking about Carlos Elizondo. If you want to go back and, and pinpoint back, oh, this and this, let's focus here. You want to do squirrel, squirrel over there. Carlos Elizondo has shown a pattern, a repeated pattern of having no respect for his fellow colleagues, no respect for a BISD employee. He did say F you to her in an open forum. Okay? If you're okay with that, then you, you, you deserve mediocrity. You deserve somebody telling you F you in front of everyone. So if you're okay with somebody saying F you to colleagues, if you're okay with saying F you to a subordinate, to the BISD employee, if you're okay with somebody, somebody being accused of corruption, which is Carlos Elizondo, of providing sensitive information to a insurance vendor, then what can I tell you? You want mediocrity. So people back Carlos because, oh, he's against the girls, he's against the girls. Who cares? At the end of the day, don't you want somebody that is going to be transparent? Don't you want that? Again, he's being accused of something very serious by his colleague on that school board of corruption. If it was me and I did nothing wrong, you know what I would have done? I have nothing to hide. I'll go to the FBI myself. It is alleged that the FBI is actively monitoring this, that the FBI is looking into Carlos Elizondo and his phone records. I forget the insurance, the insurance vendor. I think it's out of Harlingen. It's out of Harlingen. I forget the name. I forget the name. I forget the name. Forrest, no. I forget the name. It, it escapes you right now. But at one point, he was, he was vouching for them, wanting them, wanting them really bad. If you're okay with that, if you're okay with people rigging the process, if you're okay with a, another, having another Sylvia Atkinson? Really? People thought that once we got rid of Sylvia Atkinson, the school district was on the right path. No. If you followed, if you followed our program when we covered, um, the cesspool that was, or that is Rivera High School, where teachers were grooming, where having teacher-student relationships. We talked about Carlos Elizondo's wife being a counselor at that same school. She's been there for as long as I can remember, at least five possible 10 years. She was best friends to the mom, to the aunt of the accused who was arrested back in May of Trujillo, best friends with them. They knew of the culture that was Rivera High School. Did they say anything? No. But something happened. Something happened where it got real weird. Because there was this Jas Marie profile that unbeknownst to the community was posting left and right. The main focus was BISD. It was learned by our program that board members started to get curious about this Jas Marie character, about this Jas Marie profile. Because the way it works is, school board members are always given the packet ready for the, the school board meeting, are always getting, given sensitive information in regards to different things. Again, they're, they're the school board members. They are privy to information that not a lot of people have. You're either in administration or you're a school board member. Those are the only people. We can narrow that down to possibly 10, possibly 15 at most people that really know, besides the attorneys. The school board members, they started asking questions. How does this Jas Marie Reyes Facebook page? How do they have this information way before the, the public has it? Isn't that odd? Now, if you go back to our, to our program where we did discuss this and I will post it on the page, that way everybody could, could, could follow. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll find it right now and I'll post it on, 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 on the feed. That way you know exactly what I'm talking about. But it's funny to me how nobody really questioned, how nobody really asked anything about this. Now, what I found funny was that this person, I found it, is that this person, this person knew everything that was going on. And I'm going to show you here in a bit of why I think this should have been investigated. This character, this fake Facebook page should have been looked into because the things that they were saying were very, very serious. And you shouldn't, you shouldn't play with things like that. Because it's important for us to recognize that these school board members, they have a responsibility, a duty to protect and serve not only staff, but more importantly, the students of this school. So I find it funny and I'm posting it right now. Uh, I'm going to post the other one as well. I posted on, 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 on the page where you can follow along. This is where I uncover and talk about this Jas Marie character. I will post the, the full length of the video, that way you can follow along as well. Again, we call a spade a spade. And look, this Jas Marie profile, uh, page, it was going off on people such as Obed Leal, the current principal at, uh, at Rivera High School. He was saying bad, serious things. I'm posting, I'm posting the clip of Jas Marie on, on, uh, on the page. Here is the Jas Marie one where I cover just Jas Marie. And this story that I posted on, on our personal page, Olivo Frankie, this is the, the story in its entirety. And this is what pretty much put this program on the map. But if we talk about Jas Marie, during their time, they spoke about a lot of serious things. And look, again, I hate to repeat myself, but as school board members, they have a great responsibility to protect and preserve the innocence of children. I called out Carlos Elizondo, let's say on a Monday, Monday morning, that he was behind in some way, shape or fashion, this Jas Marie profile, either him directly or him providing information to somebody, a third party possibly. I dare say it's him. And I go back because Carlos has an MO of using fake profiles. He's a coward. He can't tell you what he feels on his page. He can't be like a Franco Leal and come on every morning and use my identity. I give face to my community. You may not like what I have to say, but I know you respect it. I'm not hiding. I'm not throwing the rock and, and hiding the hand. That's not me. That's a coward. I will stand before you. I will talk about everything that's important in our city and our area, in our region. You may not agree with it, but you will tune in and listen. And I appreciate that. One of the biggest things that, that, that bothered me about this Jas Marie case was something that Carlos posted and something that got the attention of the school district. Because the school district, ladies and gentlemen, they think that this, um, well, I'll speak, I'll speak in regards to Daniel Lopez Valdez. But for the most part, these school board, uh, these school board members and even the super, they think that what's posted on YouTube, on, on, on social media is fake. They think that this is like a fantasy world. Now, I understand people, people don't take Facebook serious. People don't take social media serious. I understand that. Whenever you go through Facebook, you see a lot of, you know, memes, a lot of, to me, it's not newsworthy. I get all my news from, from X, Twitter, and then I verify and corroborate that information. But for the most part, you don't have a lot of news agencies, news medias, news platforms on social media. Shouts out to someone such as Brownsville Hood. Shouts out to Tito Pulga. They do a great job of keeping our community informed. They're one of the few that do so. And we, we applaud them. We thank them. If it wasn't because of them, many of us possibly wouldn't know what is going on within our city, within our area. So those platforms, we thank and are very thankful for that. But something interesting happened, ladies and gentlemen. Jas Marie Reyes, as Carlos always does, he stretches the boundary. They see what they can get, get away with. They see, ah, I, I did this. And then they look around and say, ah, nothing's happening to me. Ah, okay, well, let me do this. Carlos was stretching that line. Again, you give someone an inch, they take a mile. Carlos Elizondo was blasting employees and using sensitive information that only school board members had to out people. What also bothers me is that he was using, that he was using, hello, 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 hello? Hello, 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 hello? Let me see if I'm on the feed. Let me see if I'm on the feed. Hello, hello, hello. You sound fine. Okay. Sorry about that. Uh, I'm not sure Santana. Um, maybe it's on your end. I do apologize. Uh, but let me know. I sound fine. Hello, 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 hello. Let me know. Thumbs up. What bothered me about this, and I, I may be going in and out of, uh, uh, what bothered me about this page was that they were using such as someone, uh, Maggie, Dr. Maggie and Susan Rubalcaba. They were using these pages to disseminate hate, disseminate all their, 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 their ugly rhetoric. Now, I ask you to my community, would you allow someone to tag you to, to, to blast people, to talk ill will of people? If you didn't know who they were? Would you let a random Joe tag you on things that you know, are ugly in nature? People tag me all the time. I vet what they have to say. I vet the person. And if I feel that that, you know, that that is worthy, that, that I trust that person, that that story's been corroborated with? Ah, I'm out. Let me know if you can hear me. Chinga, I'm having trouble. Yeah, I'm off. I guess I'm only on YouTube. On YouTube, I'm, I'm fine. Um, so again, Carlos Lizondo has, uh, has the M O, uh, has an M O of, uh, of using fake profiles. And what got him in trouble was this issue of that he posted, that there was this apartment, that there was his apartment that someone like Charlie Atkinson were using to take, to take students over there. Now, this was a time where there were rumors of Rivera High School, teachers, coaches, having these relations with the students. Carlos Lizondo accused someone such as Charlie Atkinson, a B I S D employee, of using an apartment to take children over there to party with. Now, in whose right mind would make those accusations? If they were true, you, we would hope, we would hope that they would, uh, report it as soon as possible, right? That is the only logical thing that I can think of, but he didn't. He allowed this to get away. He allowed this to grow legs. That's what bothers me about someone like Carlos Lizondo, who claims to be for the people. It's funny because he has had instances where he's had laps of judgment. And this Jas Marie profile is the same thing. It has been six months since this platform accused him of being behind Jas Marie, of posting, uh, the B I S D emblem, using the B I S D emblem. Everyone knows it's true. I was guaranteed, I was, I was given the, I spoke with two different board members and they gave me a nod. They didn't say yes. They, they didn't, they didn't want to go on the record, but I said, I'm ninety-five percent sure it's Carlos. What do you think? And they just nodded. Now, why wouldn't the school board investigate this? Why wouldn't they look into this? Again, it, it, isn't it a crime? I think Attorney Philip Cowan uh, did state that this is, uh, an impersonation of a government body, of a government entity, which carries a, a misdemeanor charge. Why wasn't this looked into? Best believe if someone like myself ever used this, ever used this. They would have arrested me. I would have been plastered all over social media. I would, I would have made an example of. But why is special treatment being given to Carlos Lizondo? So again, ladies and gentlemen, he has an M O of being a coward. Again, he's calling a, a, a female B I S D employee vulgar names. He's using, um, he's calling his colleagues on that board effing stupid. And also, he was behind the Jas Marie Facebook page that was, that used the B I S D emblem? He hid behind a fake profile? And nothing was done to him? Why? Because he's a coward. That's who he is. He wants to claim that he's for the people. Ladies and gentlemen, what has he done during his tenures at B I S D? What has he done? Nothing. He hasn't accomplished nothing. While the school board, while the school has regressed, Carlos Lizondo has benefited. Why do you think he got a job at D H R? He was doing roofs. Why do you think magically he got a job at D H R? They couldn't stand him. Now he works for some clinic. Censoring a school board member is a very serious issue. It really is. It's something that should not be treated lightly. I don't say these words. Uh, I, I, I'm not suggesting that this individual should be reprimanded, that he should be censored just because I have something against him. No, by no means. If you've been following our program, we have a track record of keeping elected leaders and those in leadership positions accountable. We do our best to let you know what exactly is going on. I would dare say that if it wasn't for our platform, this Jas Marie face, fake Facebook profile would have kept on and on and on and on. We take great pride in coming before you and relaying this information because people hide behind sheep clothing, their wolves. They lie to you in their fa- in your face. They say that they are for you, that they will be working for you, when they themselves are only after their own agendas. Censoring a board member is something that is very serious and should not be taken lightly. But whenever someone uses explicit language to their colleagues, we have to uphold integrity. We have to make sure that trust that the public expects, uh, those, uh, uh, in leadership positions to be held accountable. They serve as representatives to our city, to our community, as role models for students. Do we want them? Do we want students to look at that, that and say, ah, well, if they're saying it, I can too. By using a former censorship, the board reaffirms their commitment to accountability and ethical conduct. We're not going, going to allow such behavior to continue on. Carlos Lizondo repeatedly has shown time after time after time that he has no respect. He has no respect for women. He called a fellow employee, B I S D employee, F you in an open forum, in an open board meeting. He called his fellow colleagues F you. Effing stupid, not once, but twice. I showed you the video. He is being accused of something nefarious, how Roland likes to say. He's being accused of providing a ve- of insurance vendor with very sensitive information that they're not supposed to have. Tainting the process, that is called corruption. And if that's still not enough for you, I am showing you that he is behind the Jas Marie profile, which what a coincidence. We went live on a Monday. By that afternoon, we went live at nine in the morning, we got off at ten thirty, by twelve P M, by lunchtime. That page went dark and we have not heard from them since. Why? Because we were right. I find no joy in calling out people. I find no joy and, and people think, oh, you wanna make this better on yourself. You wanna run for public office. If I wanted to run for public office, it wouldn't be in my best interest to be doing what I do. All these politicos, they, they don't wanna go against the grain. Everybody's so big of, oh, corruption, corruption, corruption. But when it comes down to it, they don't wanna fight corruption. They wanna be part of corruption. Because if we see something wrong and we don't do anything about it, we are just as complicit. I learned from somebody that was passionate about the city. About the the school district, very passionate. One thing he always told me, whatever happened with the grievance that you failed, filed against him, nothing gets done. Nothing gets done. Again, I was, I was shut up by Eric Flores, the school board attorney. I was shut up by the soup, by the school, uh, school board superintendent. They don't care. You think they, you think they, 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 they care about what's going on? They have an image that they have to protect. And whenever an accusation such as a board member is threatening a, a fellow community member, they don't wanna hear that. There is no accountability. So unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, we have, um, we have this fight on our own. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't already, make sure you subscribe to our YouTube channel titled Franky Levo TV. Best believe good morning Bronzel will come on Monday to Friday, nine A M religiously. So make sure you subscribe to our YouTube channel titled Franky Levo TV to tune in. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, for your time and your attention. I apologize. I'm still having, uh, internet issues. I thought that was corrected. I'll try my best tomorrow.